In your interest.
Do we have to stay?
You don't have to stay, Steve. I apologise. It's not the Eagles, so you can check out any time you like. We can never leave.
Yeah, I know.
So we have started recording. I believe Glenn Williams is going to be recording as well, just to let people know. So we'll move into the full council meeting proper now. Forty twenty-three declarations of any disclosure of peculiar interest. Done shown. Obviously, if there are any as they arise, please make yourself known and we will make sure that that is recorded. Forty-one twenty-three apologies for absence, please Karen.
Mr Mitchell.
Thank you. On to forty-two twenty-three, the minutes of the full council meeting held on the twenty-eighth of March twenty-three. We're happy for those to be called as a true record for those members that were there. Not with too many of us. Got pages one, two, three and four. I'm happy for those to be signed as a true record. Thank you. Onto then the committee meeting, meetings forty-three twenty-three. To receive the amenities committee meeting on the fifth of April twenty-three. Council Jeremy, please.
Thank you, Mr. These are, as you say, the minutes from the fifth of April. It's all resolved business. No recommendations on these ones. So with that, I move the minutes.
Reid. Those that were here. Not with too many of us. Okay, moving on to the heritage and town events meeting on the sixth of April. Whilst the Chair is in the audience presenting these, I will present them as Vice Chair. Believe it was all resolved business. Pages one, two and three. Looking on the attendees, I think I was the only one who was there, so I will agree that they are true records. In my alter ego. Thank you. So moving on to the Mayor Making Meeting of the seventeenth of May. Pleased to know that the majority of you were there, so you can say whether these are a true record or not. As you're probably aware, it's very much a ceremonial meeting. Too controversial, but obviously those annexes that were tabled are relevant for the year. So I present the minutes for the Mayor Making Meeting on the seventeenth of May. Again, it's all resolved business, so pages one, two and three. I'm happy for those to be signed as a true record. Reid. And then on to the planning committee of the eighteenth of May. I was actually appointed Chair to that one, to present those. It's all resolved business. We have pages one, two, three and four. We're happy for those to be signed as a true record. Reid, you had quite a few of you there, hopefully. To say that. Onto the Personnel Meeting of the twenty-third of May. Council Jeremy, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is the Finance and Personnel Committee. There's a few recommendations included within this, so I'll go through each in order. The first one is that the council recommends that the movement in the reserve schedule to full council for the year ended thirty-first of March. That was approved by the committee recommended to full council adoption.
Happy to agree that? Leader to pose, Seconder, please. Council of Land, Council of Donald. All in favour?
Okay, and the second one is that the committee recommended the approval of the annual accounting statement to council.
Jane, can we have a proposer and Seconder, please? Council of Backwood, Council of Harvey. All in favour?
I've taken a matter of all directions. The one that should have been before that is that the committee recommends the approval of the annual government statement to council, subject to there being no adverse findings by the internal auditors later that week, which was last week. And I want to confirm, Alan, that there wasn't anything to be mentioned on that one.
The internal auditor is going to sign everything as yes, so there's no.
Nothing to report.
Yes, okay, so I'm happy to move that recommendation.
Okay, so we have a proposer and Seconder on that, please. Council Terry, Seconder, please. Council of Land. All in favour? Thank you.
Okay, and the last one is a recommendation that a contribution to the Norfolk County Council Parish Partnership Scheme of ten thousand pounds be funded from the Open Space Reserve, and that's a recommendation from Finance and Personnel to full council for approval.
Jane, can we have a proposer and Seconder, please? Council Harvey. Council Wood, I think, for the Second. All those in favour? Are you against?
Thank you. Move the minutes, Mr.
Council Jerry. Right, moving on to forty-four twenty-three. See the Mayor's remarks and reports. As you can probably see, myself didn't have too much to say, but the previous Mayor was still busy in her final few days. Thanks to for that representation effort. Firstly, thank you for attending Mayor Making on the seventeenth. I attended a meeting last week, Breckland Council launch event for Thetford a modern manufacturing town. People may have seen that. It's a Breckland initiative to try and big up Thetford's manufacturing side. They've got a little film that they're putting on their social media. And just a little, I was asked to give a closing speech, which I duly did, to launch the idea of this public arts work, which embraces some of our manufacturing heritage, but also celebrates our manufacturing industries that we have today. I'm just a little concerned that we've had a number of initiatives with Breckland over the years, that they throw some money at this and get it going, but we still need to keep repeating this message out there to keep flying the flag for Thetford. So hopefully my Breckland councillors can keep that in mind when this is mentioned, that we can still keep Thetford up there as a place to be proud of for the employment that we have here. Did attend a Norfolk County Council meeting today, and I know two other councillors met me there. I won't steal their thunder too much, but I would say that we do need to publicise it via our website as a town council, so that we have the public an opportunity to engage in it. But also I was a little disappointed that the presenters still came to the meeting quite cold. For those of us who have been involved with the growth of Thetford's planning over the last fifteen to twenty years, there's been a great deal of work in terms of green infrastructure that has been put forward in reports written by a number of people, but including Whitaker, who's Chair of the Cora. And it was disappointing that they weren't aware of that when we questioned them. It should be, you know, you do all this work, you don't want to keep reinventing the wheel. But hopefully the public will have their say by when we can publicise it, but also councillors can feedback because it is an important issue. If we are getting funding for the green infrastructure we sorely deserve, we do have to work harder to get here. That's me, me high horse, sorry. Onto forty-five twenty-three, Town Council Representatives. Bodies. I don't see any hands coming up. I don't believe we've had too many meetings in the couple of weeks that we've been in business. If there's nothing there to report, then move on to reports from county and district councillors on the forty-six twenty-three. I'm going to call upon Council James to give her local county councillor report. She's come to see us with, armed with some information, no doubt.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and congratulations on your appointment as Mayor, and congratulations to you, the new councillors here in Thetford. So at the Norfolk County Council AGM on the night of May, I was honoured to be invited to join the cabinet there as portfolio holder for corporate services and innovation. And that's building on the experience that I obtained last year during my journey on the Breckland District Party of Thetford. I think it's incredibly important for Thetford as a vital market town in Norfolk to have a seat at that top table. When Council Jeremy and I were elected, we both pledged to wage war and improve by our underpasses, as these were a feature that joined our divisions, and we upheld meetings with the highways engineer on this subject. Following frustrations by residents regarding the continuing flooding at the Minster Gate all the past, I was pleased to be able to accelerate the intervention of the highways team and got a contractor on that side quite quickly to clear the drains, once they've been made where a bit. This has been an ongoing issue that has marred this vital access to and from the town centre. And I will continue to put pressure on improvements in this area, and I know Council Jeremy is flying that flag hard as well. This, along with other division-related issues, have been reported to Norfolk County Council in the correct manner by the reported system. I was pleased to intervene on such an occasion as the response from highways regarding visibility issues on a crossing on the Norwich Road, and had an engineer sent out the very next day. Sadly, a resident had already taken action. I'm very grateful to them, but I'm disappointed that they felt they needed it, and they resolved that issue. But I do urge those who do not get a satisfactory response to such situations to engage with their county councillors directly. Norfolk County Council, as the Mayor has already mentioned, has a new place to have the local cycling and walking infrastructure there. Your line survey is available on the Norfolk County Council website, as well as there being engagement opportunities such as that one that we've mentioned today. I will make clear that whilst I support investment in people being able to choose how they move around their locality, that cannot be to the detriment on existing arrangements, and this is about choice, not restrictions as far as I am personally concerned. Apprenticeships Norfolk have launched a new levy support scheme to enable companies who pay the apprenticeship levy, but don't spend it for their occasion, to transfer their funding directly to other companies to allow further training opportunities. And as the Mayor mentioned at the recent manufacturing event, Thetford has a wealth of firms who invest in their workforce in this way. And this will enable more opportunities to upskill existing employees, as well as taking on new apprentices. And that sign up is on the Apprenticeships Norfolk website, which I'm happy to share with the team for publication. There's also currently a Norfolk special educational needs survey, which I know is incredibly important to several people's hearts in this room. And that's to try and continue to improve the services and support in this area where necessary. It is online and it's open till the end of June. Looking forward to ensure this engagement between us is meaningful for both the town council and its residents. As such, I am happy to receive any questions or queries in advance of future meetings, so that I can provide you with a wholesome, full response. And I'd also ask actually that the town council, at here's the standing order twenty-three, I know this has been a challenge in the past, and ensures that any elected councillor representing this town that is not on the town council receives invitations to these meetings, along with copies of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Just call upon Council Jeremy to stand on any county matters there, and then lead into the Breckland.
Well, Jane and I are going to sound remarkably similar tonight, because underpasses in Thetford have been an issue for both of us for years, frankly. And as it happens, I had a scheduled appointment today with a Norfolk County Council highways officer to look at the Brandon Road underpass, which has been a longstanding issue. It flooded way before the Minster Gate one, but, you know, it's clearly catching on. The issue at Brandon Road is there are sockets for lights, but as any of you that walked along there in the evening, there is not a single light covering that underpass. It does flood, it's covered in graffiti, and there's various other issues. So I took the opportunity to meet with the chap today, and I might have discovered why Brandon Road's been let down, because after ten fifteen minutes waiting around, I rung him, and he'd gone to the wrong location. So we might have solved that issue. At least they know where it is now. But it was a really useful conversation, and what I decided to do was to literally put him in the car and drive him around to Minster Gate, and I need to catch up with Jane afterwards. There is a huge issue with underpasses, because some responsibilities are county, some responsibilities are Breckland District, and as we found today, there's a couple of town council related issues as well. So it's kind of like a local government night, frankly. And what I've agreed to do is to write up the notes from the meeting today. It was a very, very useful highways officer. I've not met him before. And basically compile a bit of a report about how those three different organisations can tackle some of the issues. So issues to do with drainage, first of all, which is very much a county issue, and the regular clearing out of the drains is clearly needing to happen. Graffiti, which is a, I'm pretty certain, he wasn't certain, but I'm pretty certain, is a Breckland council responsibility. And cleaning the floor. There are issues with signage, certainly at Brandon Road. There is a number of signs missing. And also lighting, which is a county function as well. So there's a whole number of issues. And where the town council comes in, around street furniture particularly, an absence of bins in lots of locations as well. So what I've undertaken to do is to type up those notes, get some more feedback from him and from Breckland, circulate that to all councillors, so that we all know who's responsible for what as a starting point, because that's where a lot of the confusion comes in. People say, I've reported it to Breckland. You know, so it goes on, in an attempt to move forward. Interestingly, you may have seen in the press, there was a flooding of an underpass issue in Deirham recently. We're not the only ones that not having our underpasses looked after. So Norfolk County Council are coming to Breckland Council scrutiny committee meeting next Thursday. So any Breckland councillors that want to attend or have issues with anything highways related in Breckland, whether that be grass cutting, whether that be underpasses, anything like that, potholes, dare I say. Please do feed that in. We want to collect examples of where there have been issues and press them next Thursday for some answers to issues across Breckland. So that will be taking place next week. For those that are interested, you might have noticed for about the last year, on the corner of St Nicholas Street and London Road, there's been an orange barrier laying on the floor. You win a prize if you spotted that. It's been there for a very long while and just over time, fallen into a state of disrepair. So I took the opportunity to show the highways guy that today. There was a huge hole underneath that orange barrier. And he was quite shocked. It had been allowed to stay like that for so long. So I'm hoping at the very least today's visit would resolve that particular issue. But yes, lots to do on underpasses. We don't want to repeat what happened at Minster Gate. I think he got the message, because as we stood there and he was in his usual hi-vis, I think about six different residents stopped him and gave, you know, chewed his ear from the back, which was very, very useful. On a more positive note, there is a resident of Abbey Gate who is very passionate about keeping that underpass clean and tidy, and regularly sweeps, removes graffiti himself. And I'm very keen, from an amenities point of view, about how we can formalise that process through amenities, get people registered as, you know, town council volunteers, covered by our insurance, and we support them with the equipment and that sort of approach, because he's paying for it all himself at the moment. And the guy from highways nearly had a heart attack when he said he'd been pressure washing the underpass and using all sorts of chemicals and the rest of it. But I'm more in favour of harnessing that passion and looking forward to what we can do through amenities on that.
Thank you. Council Harvey.
Yeah, can I ask Terry a question on the Norfolk County Council? Okay, regarding the battle, the ongoing battle we have with lighting, can you explain the rationale for County Council closing the recycling centre earlier? Is it eight hours or four o'clock?
Yeah. I think that was in the most recent budget that was adopted in February, I think. There was a consultation taking place towards the end of last year. And forgive me for using council speak, but they've harmonised the opening times. So the summer opening hours are now the same as the winter, and I think they shut at four. Not something that I personally supported. You know, if you work, you're disadvantaged to access the tip. And they are still open on bank holidays though, which I think is really important, and they're very busy on bank holidays. But not something that I personally supported. I, you know, we have a, our recycling centre is a big one out of all of them in Norfolk. It's very well used. I would rather see more access than restricted access.
Thank you.
So we move on then to district councillors. District councillors got any reports about as they wish to bring back to the town council? No? Terry, have you got anything else? So Chris?
Yeah, a couple. I'd like to mention, we had a terrific weekend in Thetford. The market, et cetera, et cetera. We had our normal issues with the bins. It emptied properly, so they don't seem to be reactive to bank holding weekends and good weather. Circu with the efforts of one of our councillors did go out and empty their bins. Disappointingly, Thetford Town Council didn't do Castle Park. I was at Castle Park with my grandchildren on Sunday. There was glass under benches. My grandchildren went about picking up plastic bottles. The bins were overflowing. What's good? Is there any way we could be more proactive on the bank holding weekend?
I think we need to take that through amenities and they.
The bins that are private bins by the things house here, but obviously everything's been dumped in there as well. And it'd be nice if we could get Circu to do them. I know that they don't normally do that. But most of the stuff that's in them is from the market, so it'd be nice if we could get that done as well.
Obviously, that's a private, you know, bins, which we may be able to look at or provide extra bins if we are having the market back, which I think we are looking to at the August bank holiday. So if we get some extra bin capacity put in, that may be the way forward.
Excellent.
Yeah, just on that point there, I mean, it's pretty much an eyesore down there even to this time. One of the problems with that is it's a planning issue, in that those bins are stuck on the high street. Now, when we do our planning considerations and we talk about having bins directly on ice, that's the thing that is caused. If you look in those bins at any other time other than now, it's mostly trade waste. So the problem with that is twofold. Firstly, it's not the residents of those flats. It's trade waste. They need to pay for trade bins, and they don't want to do that because that's more expensive. And in fact, they shouldn't be allowed to be on this high street in the first place. So I think it's more of that issue than it is about whether we clear it up. You know, it's more about an enforcement piece there. Thank you.
Right, any further Breckland councillors, I should speak. Council Jeremy, anything further on Breckland?
The only Breckland-related thing I'd mention is around housing. I'm sure all councillors are aware of the challenges the housing department Breckland faces. Particularly at the moment, there's a big issue with private rented houses and landlords selling or downsizing linked to the increase in interest rates. You know, lots of landlords at the moment completely unable to afford interest rate rises and downsizing. That's put a huge pressure on Breckland's housing department. I went to Cabinet today and raised an issue around void rates. When somebody leaves their flagship property, there's always a bit of a lag between when somebody moves back in. It has to be, you know, cleaned sometimes or maintenance undertaken, and that lag is known as a void rate. I've seen properties in my own ward that are empty for, you know, a considerable amount of time. We need to get those properties back into use as soon as possible to reduce the pressure on temporary accommodation and the costs that the council was racking up, and also the poor service that people are receiving. So the leader of Breckland today said, if anyone's got any examples of any houses that are empty for a very long period of time, whether they are flagship homes or private, private properties, do let Breckland councillors know. And, you know, that is something the council could apply some pressure on. Or in certain circumstances, support landlords to get those properties back into use. There's huge demand at the moment for temporary accommodation. I've dealt with a number of cases where people are being put into temporary accommodation in Norwich and Great Yarmouth, you know, away from Thetford. It's causing issues for people's employment, causing issues for people's schools, and one way we can help reduce that is through tackling void rates.
Thank you. Right, anything further from Breckland councillors? Then we'll move on to forty-seven twenty-three, the Twenty Minute Neighborhood. To discuss on the Twenty Minute Neighborhood letter from Norfolk County Council, which was addressed to the previous Mayor, who chose to circulate that for us, and we're looking to formalise a response. Council Jeremy has drafted this. Do you wish to just read it as it is, or is there anything background you want to add to that?
I'm happy if you want to read it, and then I've got some words to add, to propose.
So hopefully people have had sight of this. Put it out there. Yep. So thank you for inviting Norfolk County Council representatives to your public meeting on Thursday. Jane, so on to the response. So, yeah, Tom, thank you for the letter dating nineteenth of April. Following public meeting, Thetford discussed concerns relating to Twenty Minute Neighborhoods. Grateful for your written confirmation that there are no existing plans for Twenty Minute Neighborhoods in Thetford. Wish to make clear that Thetford Town Council does not support the introduction of Twenty Minute Neighborhoods in our town. We would welcome investment in opportunities to increase access to local services by sustainable travel options, including walking and cycling, particularly given that twenty-five percent Thetford residents do not own a car. We appreciate that the county councillors currently researching the Twenty Minute Neighborhood concept, and the Norfolk version of the Twenty Minute Neighborhoods is not defined. But we want to make it clear at the outset that we would not support any proposals that incorporated fines or financial penalties for people using their car. Similarly, we do not support any restrictions on movement. Our approach would be encouragement, not enforcement, when it comes to transport choices. There's much that can be done to encourage active travel and reduce dependency on cars. Given recent incidents in town that have involved pedestrians and cyclists being injured and others tragically killed, filing collisions with vehicles, we would strongly request that more is done to improve safety issues locally. Thetford has long been left behind when it comes to investment in local services, in particular investment related to walking, cycling and other sustainable travel. Look forward to working constructively with Norfolk County Council to address these issues. So are any questions, comments? I know Council Jeremy's got some suggested additions, but nothing from the floor at this stage.
No, I don't have any additions, but I would like to propose the adoption of the letter. The concept of Twenty Minute Neighborhoods has been very divisive over these last few months, and it's caused a lot of stress and anxiety for residents. I'm pleased that we've received this letter from Norfolk County Council, which I think gives clarity on their own position. And I think it's important that we, as a town council, give clarity on our own, on our position. And that is why, at this early stage, at the first proper business meeting of this new council, I have drafted this suggested response, which I'm hoping we will adopt tonight. There is without doubt many ways in which we can increase opportunities for walking and cycling locally. There's opportunities too for increasing travel by trains and buses. But the underlying principle should be that these are choices, not requirements. Our focus, or more to the point, the county council's focus, should be on encouragement, not enforcement. Let's adopt this letter, let's get it sent, and in doing so, I hope that we become a town council that lobbies for and leads on the improvements that we do want and the investment that we need. Let us not be a town that is done to, but done with as we speak up for our residents. So I'm quite happy to propose that letter.
Okay, so I have a proposal, I have a second for the letter. So are all those in favour of adopting the letter? And against? Oh, unanimous. Thank you very much. I'll get that letter drafted and sent off. Moving on then to forty-eight twenty-three, engagement with Flagship regarding the Abbey regeneration plans. Council of Land is probably the lead on this. We have a suggested letter to Flagship. Did you wish to read that out for us or add to the background?
We, can we, thank you, Mr Mayor, can we read that letter first and then?
Yeah, I'll go to me to read it.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
So this is addressed to Dimstfer McQuaid, following the local elections fourth of May twenty twenty-three. I've been instructed to write to the following resolution at full council meeting of Thetford Town Council. Many of our councillors stood with clear public commitment against Flagship's Abbey's regeneration plans in their current form. For giving us a clear mandate to formally object to these proposals and withdraw Thetford Town Council's support. Having now met as a full council, members have requested that to write to you at this early point to state the council's position. Residents have been clear the addition of hundreds of new homes is not appropriate, particularly when they would be taking up so much, much value of green spaces. The people we spoke to also felt that compulsory purchase of so many properties would shatter the strong community spirit that exists, forcing people out of their homes against their wishes. Residents did not feel that their voices had been listened to during the consultation, and do not believe they have been adequately allowed to shape the proposals of their community. Thetford Town Council acknowledges these objections. As such, we cannot support your proposals. The Abbey Estate deserves much needed investment, but these proposals are wrong, and we're not supported by the local residents or their elected representatives. We call upon Flagship Housing to pause your proposals and establish a new regeneration steering committee consisting of Flagship Housing, elected representatives and local people.
Council of Land. Thank you. I propose Thetford Town Council writes Flagship Housing to express our opposition to the proposed development of the Abbey Estate. This project isn't really regeneration at all, but infill, and has been roundly rejected, as said, by residents. The scheme would crown five hundred more houses into an area already containing a thousand properties, largely by building on green spaces. Residents would be denied the access to recreation areas they now enjoy, and a majority will suffer uncertainty and upheaval due to compulsory purchases and enforced moves. The consultation process. The consultation process, consultation of the Congress, was characterised by a lack of information for residents, vague and ever changing promises and a lack of focus. Despite attending several meetings, I never once saw notes being taken by flagship officials. In the lead up to the recent town and district elections, Thetford Labour canvassed the area thoroughly secretly using the project. I'm very proud to manage to speak to over five hundred residents and have a real feel for issues, something flagship didn't attempt. That cohort, we found just a handful, I do mean a handful, who supported the project and a huge majority against. Literally the amount of people that before the project could be counted on the fingers, one hand. Thetford Town Council are not a planning authority, nor the landowner. They have the most elected local representatives who are closest to the communities they serve. It is very important we stand up for our residents.
And so we have a proposal to send this letter. Second, please, councillor Brindle. So all those in favour of us sending the letter? None against, unanimous. Thank you. Right, on to forty nine twenty three, the adoption of a framework that sets out the council priorities. To discuss and adopt priorities for current council term and agree framework for delivery following the May twenty three elections, as contained in unlocking Thetford's potential document distributed with the agenda. Councillor Jeremy, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. If I may introduce this item. Like a number of you, I was born in Thetford. I grew up here. I choose the knit there. I love Thetford, but like many, I get frustrated about Thetford's potential not being met. We have so much going for us as a town with our environment, the river, our heritage and the community spirit and much more. But for all the talk, do we move forward? Do we see that potential being realised? Very often, it feels like a constant case of jam tomorrow rather than action today. Going into this election, my fourth election campaign, I wanted to provide residents with something to vote for. Not just a vote against the government, a vote against Breckland or a vote against whoever, but a clear set of proposals on offer. As a group of candidates, we have spent the last year holding council surgeries, coordinating litter picks and running door knocking sessions, talking to more than a hun- hundred thousand, a thousand people about their priorities, their issues. And I am delighted that that information, all of that data was collected and and put into this document. That is what was on offer at the election and I am delighted that people voted for that positive message. Voting for a chance to move things forward. It is a set of priorities that is tabled this evening in this document. Now, despite it being a Labour manifesto, there is much in here that I'm sure other members of the council support. I know there is. There are many things too that will be priorities for you and your community. I urge you to bring them forward. There might be a Labour majority on the town council, but I want us to work as one council where all ideas and suggestions are welcome. That is what the public expect and that is how we will behave. With this mandate for the next four years comes a big responsibility. We absolutely must deliver. If people in Thetford can't say in four years' time that they have noticed a difference, that they can point to actions undertaken by this council that have improved things, if we don't implement this manifesto, then we will have failed. And that is not an option. This is an overarching document, a framework. The devil is always in the detail, as they say, and specific individual proposals will come forward over time. But be clear, this is a framework for change. It's a chance to unlock Thetford's potential. And I'm really pleased to be able to propose that this be adopted. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a second for that, please? To Terry. Before we take the vote, I would like to just understand if there are any people wishing to comment on the content or question what processes that we're looking to. No. Councillor McDonald.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I mean, obviously I've looked at the manifesto. I think like most of us in here, I really thoroughly support anything that moves Thetford forward. I think, you know, if it's positive change, that's what I think is vital. I don't fully understand the detail of some of the stuff in there and, you know, I'm sure we're going to have discussions about that because it, some of it to me doesn't make sense, but then perhaps I'm not fully read into it. What I would say, and I think this is probably the most important bit for me. You know, we are Thetford Town Council now. That that piece of paperwork, which is clearly covered red, if it's going to be taken forward, it must no longer be referred to as that. It's got to be a town council project. We are Thetford Town councillors, we are not independent pieces of that. And as an example, the Boudica Group have, you know, set up our own WhatsApp group so that we are cross party, talking to each other. And that has got to be the way we work for the rest of this time. It has to be a town council view, not an individual, not a party view. Because for all the people who voted for that, there will be others who have a negative opinion and will rail against it. And when we're trying to do good things, that's unhelpful. So I would plead pleas that we we go into it joint, we go into it in a studied way. But personally, I do need to know more of the detail. There are bits in there about which are fundamentally large pieces of change to the Carnegie, for instance, which I'm uncomfortable with, I'll be quite honest. So I do need that explained to me. But, you know, let's make it a good thing for the town. You know, and I would hate to think that we are ever in a position, we have been in the past, where deals are done behind doors. We need to be completely open and honest with each other. Thank you.
On my, so Karl, it's brighter.
Interesting. First a couple of points that were council made. I agree that as long as the, as long as points on the, on the plan are posted for Thetford, I'm all for it. I'm not particular about which call they come from, from which party. You mean as an independent, I couldn't care less about the party, whatever's behind it. I carry state ideas, I could invest, I want to benefit from it. I would support them. I just don't like to ask and reinforce is that there are some questions about some of the points in the, in the, in the plan. I also like more to tell about it. If there are good ideas, I'll support it, but I wouldn't like the plan to be rigid. Obviously, we understand there's a majority of the party that proposes the plan. But I'm sure as the year develops, as the four years goes through, there'll be things that'll come up, there'll be ideas people throw on the table. And I just want to make sure that it's a flexible plan and that all members and all councillors are open to negotiate and to considerate, impacting consideration all proposals and all ideas that come of what regardless of whether or not the majority will propose them or for many other, the other councillors represent them, the residents, that's all.
Good. Thank you. I think if I may comment similarly, I think it's one of those things that I think we do need to have an opportunity to revise, say a year's time, if there are things that are evolving there, we may choose to refocus maybe on on certain things that, you know, we can make a difference with and they are not prioritised, the items in there, we're trying to do all things, all men out there. So I would suggest that we adopt this as a framework for now and look to revisit it at some point in the future, whether it be an annual review or, you know, a couple of years' time. But until such time, we present something else, this will stand as our priorities, if that's happy for all those out here. So we have a proposal, we have a second, so I'll ask a vote for those in favour of adopting this as our framework. That's pretty much unanimous. Thank you. Right, on to forty five twenty three, licence for Wetherspoons to continue to use the outside area. My name against it. Sorry.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. A little bit uncomfortable this one because we've had no information about the previous licence, where it's come from, or where it is, what what the proposal is to adopt a new licence. And until we have some form of documentation, how can we possibly vote on something that would it could upset after after town? If we're all going to be working together, we should have that information. And I'd ask, could we defer that to a later meeting, please?
So I apologize if there's no paperwork to come with it. I thought that would have been sent out. But information, the licence was granted by their previous council for a twelve month period, which was coming up renewal. The previous council suggested that the decision obviously should be made by this council because it was all due in in this period. I can only apologize that you haven't had the information to make that decision. Are we as a council asking for that to be deferred or do we wish to go to a vote? Deferred? So how do we stand in terms of the licence at the moment? What's the exact date of?
The current lease expires on the third of July.
So we've got time to revisit that. So we're happy to defer that item to the next meeting. Right. To fifty one twenty three, an update on the telecommunications arrangement of the master at Charles Borough Centre. Deputy Town Park. And you.
So I don't particularly interest of this because I'm in Charles Borough.
Okay.
Thank you, your mind.
So we've got three non-perpetual interests noted. Councillor Harvey, Brindle and Jeremy.
When we supporting paperwork that we distributed with the agenda, I just sent out a timeframe of what had happened in July twenty ninth, twenty ninth of July twenty twenty one, the council passed the resolution at that particular stage and that's set up in that particular document. And then essentially what was looked at was would the council relook at its involvement in the NCC being intermediary and and the CBC. And it seems that the correspondence went cold. And then February of this year, correspondence heated up again. And what I've done is I've just really just sent out a timeframe of what that correspondence has been. It's all in the, it's all in the documentation that was sent you. Each party's got to solicit this. We as Thetford Town Council have gone to ask listeners just to get general advice as to what would happen to us. If we had to incur costs in terms of the lease, how would we recover that? Would that be recoverable? And our solicitors have told us that we need to play with Norfolk County Council's listeners. So the latest bit of information that's come out of this particular process, and I don't want to run through all the, all the particular email because I have put them in the document. It's essentially, it looks like the applicant for the mast has, will impose a code on, on, on the Thetford Town Council and on Charles Borough and on Norfolk County Council. And in terms of that code, if it's upheld, there's no implications for anyone to actually override leases. And the licensee or the applicant will be able to install the mast on the Charles Borough Centre's property. Information that we have is that that process, the deadline for that was the twenty third of May. So we're under the impression that the the three G Hutchinson are going to pursue that particular point of action. The outcome for both parties is that there's no cost involved, whether it resolves any other issues that are associated with the leases. Obviously, that's got to be resolved by this particular issue.
Okay, so just for new councillors' benefit of explaining the situation where we are. When the Charles Borough School was made redundant, this town council chose to take a lease from Norfolk County Council to keep the building going and to stop it becoming a target for vandalism and the like. A new Charles Borough CIC, I think it is, then take a lease from Thetford Town Council. So we as a town council are just intermediaries of this lease. We don't interfere with the the ongoing running of the the site. Norfolk County Council are still the free holders. The telecommunications people came to us and they talked about this, but it looks as though this code or tribunal is the way that it trumps the lease, which means that we don't incur any costs in changing the lease for the small bit of land that they're looking to have. And so I think it's more us noting that that is what is happening rather than making a decision. Am I correct? So I don't think we have to make a decision. We just note that that process is in process, that's what I'm saying. Are we happy with that? Is there any further questions? Because I know it's something just thrown out of the woodwork for you. Councillor McDonald, councillor Bretto.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. The first one is, I understood that the mask company was going to pay the costs. Was that not what we were briefed previously? That's my first question.
I think what happened is Norfolk County Council put down an estimate of their costs. The town council, when we were approached, we went to get, we went to ask listeners to get that answer. It seems now that the licensee is not going to pursue that at all. They said we were pushing our luck by asking for those costs to be recovered. They're going to rely on the code because they've just had a favorable judgment at tribunal in respect of the code and they won't need to incur any additional costs or fund our costs.
Okay, right, that's good. The other, the other question is a sort of an apple question or a a difficult waters question in that it made absolute sense that the town council got involved to save a school and and make sure that the Charles Borough Centre could exist. I don't understand why it would still make any sense that we are involved in in any way, shape or form with what is actually a separate entity. I don't understand why we would sit in between Norfolk County Council. We don't own anything, we don't gain anything from it. It just feels like we muddy the waters. Am I completely off kilter there?
If I may come back on that. We did have discussions when it was on the risk register about our involvement. And I think that our big fear is what we don't want to do is to see the Charles Borough Centre fail. And what could happen is Norfolk County Council say, right, we're going to have a new lease being offered from Norfolk County Council to the Charles Borough Centre. But it's not going to be at the peppercorn or the small rent that we're paying now. It could be at a full commercial rent, which means the Charles Borough Centre may not be viable in its current form, which, so we would undermine the viability of the Charles Borough Centre by making them go for a new lease with Norfolk County Council. So that's, I think, where our moral stance is. I like you, legality wise, it would be so much simpler if Charles Borough Centre had their own lease with the county council. But knowing the way the county council is tied for funds, it may be that they see this as a bit higher on their asset sheet in terms of value than they were previously when we first entered into the lease. So I think that's the background to it. So but again, it is still a risk to this town council and it's up to us to discuss that matter further. You know, should we wish to go down that route? But at the moment, that's the rationale why it's sitting with us as it is.
Yeah, I have no, no wish to see the Charles Borough Centre fail. And I do think it would be a significant risk if it was, you know, forced towards a town council with our, you know, much lower asset values. And what I would say is that we've got two Norfolk County councillors in the room. So perhaps that's something that you could challenge in the future and maybe we will be able to change that without any serious risks of Charles Borough Centre in the future.
I think that the fear of that is by setting my head above the parabola, it may bring it to the wall. Maybe we can explore that subtly over the time. So thank you for that. Councillor Bretto.
Mr Mayor, just want to make a point regarding the masks. Because we had a lively discussion about the placement of telecommunication masks on previous planning meeting here. It's a cycle because one of the entities wants to place a mask, they want to place it in a location full of our residents. So we have, we have to talk about it. Just make sure, let's all be unclear. There's no way around of changing those masks out of here because we, I know we've been through this application before. So this is the start. This is about who's paying the costs. Is that the issue of question? And just for clarification, is it right to say that when they decide on a location, it's extremely hard to get them to change it or to contest it? Because I know this is going to come up on the other issue of the primary mass that has not been asked replaced, that has been placed, that has been asked, re-licensed. And just for, for the public to be aware of. Usually, from my perception, previous meeting and this meeting is that when they decide, when the communication company decide to put the mask there's no, no real way around it. I think when it comes down, it really comes down to who's going to pay for it. I think that's the big fuss about it. But whether or not they put the masks, that's no longer up for discussion because they usually get their way around it and they have the legal tools to do so. So I just want to make sure that that point was clear to a lot of people. Some people ask, why is it here? Some people ask about why it's here and not somewhere else while they decide what to put it and should really have to contest it. Thank you.
Thanks for that point. I think it's probably relevant just to make reference to the planning item. We had a temporary mast planning application. And as a result of the discussion we had with that, we talked about referring that matter to the Great Theft Partnership. And I'm pleased that the Great Theft Partnership officer is in the audience today. And we can possibly have a discussion on that point. And it may be, we, we're looking for what plans there are for masts generally in the town, how they interact. And it may be that if this is permanent masts is put up, there may not be the requirement for the temporary mast that we spoke about at planning. But we don't really know the answer to that. But you're right, it's very difficult to challenge marks placement. So we will have further guidance once it's gone to Great Theft Partnership.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think there's nothing further to do on that one, just to note that. So we move on then to fifty two twenty three, community engagement, discuss any consultation media release required. Councillor McDonald.
You've already mentioned it once, sorry. This, this, you've put it there, thank you. If we can make sure that goes on our town website.
Something clever. Do you want me to just, oh?
The two letters on social media.
Oh, what, these two letters?
The two letters.
Yeah, yeah, so we've got two letters that we're sending out that this council has agreed to tonight. So we said we will put those on the social media. Um, I don't. Anything further? We did say there was one, but bear with me.
The governance statement thing. I think we brought in community notice boards.
As soon as we can finish this. Nothing stopping us putting it on. Um, if there's something good there. Right, that's the only answer we've got. Date, so fifty two, fifty three twenty three, committee officers update. Is that a joke? It's nice to hear. So fifty four twenty three is exclusion of press and public to consider resolving the pursuit to the Public Body of Submission to Meetings Act nineteen sixty. Press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity will be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. I'll be happy to agree to that exclusion. Okay, so thank you to the public who've stayed through that and hopefully it was of interest to them and see you again in the future.
Add for that all that.